Attorney Counsel Chambers, I do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance. We do have a forum, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So we'll start today with three O's of office. The first, Judge Morale, please correct me if I said that the wrong way. Chief.
Thank you. It is my pleasure and privilege this evening to introduce two of our newest firefighters to our family. The first one is Joshua Morale. He began his probationary appointment as a firefighter for the Moline Fire Department on May 16th. Josh was raised in Centerville, Illinois and graduated from Orkney High School. He subsequently has joined the United States Army Reserves as a firefighter. Forgive me. And remains active in the reserves as an E4 specialist. He will be enrolled in the paramedic program at Blackhawk College beginning in the fall. Firefighter Morale is joining the scene. Parents, he's from Sheila, who is sitting here, and his girlfriend, Karen.
Raise your right hand and raise your右手. Hi, Joshua Morale.
Calling me from the paramedic department.
Joshua Morale. Have been duly appointed to rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Moline.
And the city of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my will.
According to the best of my will.
All right, Your Honor and Counsel. The next gentleman to receive his probationary appointment was Matthew Taylor, who also began his career with the Moline Fire Department on May 16th. Matthew was raised in McComb, Illinois and graduated from McComb High School. Then he graduated from Spoon River Community College with an associate's degree in general studies and a general certificate in advanced welding. He will be enrolled in the paramedic program at Blackhawk College this fall as well. And then will attend the firefighter cabinet in 2022. Firefighter Taylor is joined this evening by his parents Sandy and Michael. And my pleasure to introduce Grandpa Dave and Grandma Lynn.
Please raise your right hand. I'm Matthew Taylor.
I'm Matthew Taylor.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Have been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I solemnly will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. I will strictly adhere to the laws of the state of Illinois.
Strictly adhere to the laws. The laws of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the.
Prohibitionary firefighter/paramedic.
Prohibitionary firefighter/paramedic.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the fire department for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my will.
According to the best of my will.
Congratulations. Oh, she has mine. She has mine. All right. Our next O of the office is Michael Doyd, who is meeting up at position of public works director. Please raise your right hand and raise your右手.
I'm Michael Doyd.
I'm Michael Doyd.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
To the position of public works director.
To the position of public works director.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Will strictly adhere to the Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And the Moline code of ordinances.
And the Moline code of ordinances.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of public works director for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the position of public works director for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my will.
According to the best of my will.
Congratulations. Okay, we will now move to number four, board appointments. You can see these are all reappointments. Tilt for flowers to the Board on Fire and Police Commissioners for a full term. Reappointment of Jeff Nelson to the Thought City Civic Center Authority for a full term. And reappointment of Diane Summers, Wayne Smith, and Gary Keller to the Library Board for a full re-adjournment. Any questions? All right, carrying on, we move to our proclamation for Men's Health Network to get their June 2022 as Men's Health Month. My proclamation reads, whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, men continue to live an average of five years less than women, with Native American and African-American men having the lowest life expectancy. And whereas educating the public and healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems will result in reducing rates of mortality from disease. And whereas men who are educated about the value that preventative healthcare can play in prolonging their lifespan and their role as productive family members will be more likely to participate in health screenings. And whereas Men's Health Network worked with Congress to develop a national men's health awareness period as a special campaign to help educate men, boys, and their families about the importance of positive health attitudes and preventative health practices. Now, therefore, I send Heatha Wright Huddy, Mayor of Moline in the great state of Illinois, to purify, proclaim June 2022 as Men's Health Month. There we have it. Congratulations, Counsel.
On behalf of all men, I'd like to.
All right, thank you. We move to public comment. I believe we do have some body email this evening. Is there anyone in person for public comment? Okay, I'll turn to the clerk to read the email public comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first of two is from Chris Mathias. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Counsel. My name is Chris Mathias and I reside at 2816 36th Street in Moline. As a longtime employee of the planning and development department, I was surprised to see that the city is considering not enforcing its landscaping regulations pertaining to the Planet Fitness remodel of the former Best Buy space. I promise to accomplish accomplishment of my 16 years at the city of Moline with the zoning code that we put in place in 2006 as it introduced landscaping and building design requirements. I want to say that again, so it sinks in. We had zero landscaping requirements prior to 2006, but the bulk of our development happened before 1980. You do the math on how many parking lots are out there with zero landscaping. As staff, we received some pushback at the time when we created the new zoning code, as many felt it would be overly burdensome. What I'm most proud of is that we found a way that the code could work, even with small businesses that have limited resources. Within that code is section 35-3112C, which is language we use to require additional landscaping to be installed when a non-conforming property is being renovated. It's great language because the amount of landscaping to be installed is related to the amount of money that's being put into the building. Also, it requires landscaping to be installed, even if there's no new building or parking lot going in. I felt good that we had tools that would help the small businesses improve their property and make the city commercial areas look better, but also could provide heavier requirements for big developers that could afford a full landscaping installation. When I worked with Touch of Touch and 27th Street, or Harleys and I've been to Cities, or Jones and Moore and 16th Street, just to name a few, I was extremely proud of the way that the code worked for those small businesses. The city got improved landscaping, wore an improved look on the outside of the building, and the small business liked how the property looked when the project was done. It sounds like now that the landscaping language is being reviewed by legal counsel and it makes me wonder why. Did the city try to enforce these regulations and get back, get some pushback from developers? Or are we simply trying to enforce our zoning code? I would hope that even if legal counsel determines that there is something wrong with the current 35-3112C language, that you will consider revising the language and keeping a form of it in the zoning code. I still have many varying, I'm sorry, we still have many varying parking lots around town, and there's a good chance that when those properties are renovated, it will not be with a new building or new parking lot. You need a form of this language and a code to ensure that even projects that are only renovated need to provide some additional landscaping. Few areas of the city need landscaping more than this stretch of 16th Street. Thank you for your time. And the second is from Aldman Mike Watt, who was unable to be here this evening. I'm sorry I was unable to be there tonight. Unacceptably, my daughter's high school soccer team won sectional and now is competing immediately for a chance to go to state tonight. In addition, my daughter, who had been injured, was cleared to play on Friday, and that was unexpected as well. But because I could not be there, I wanted my thoughts to be read into the record for tonight's meeting. Regarding the broadband recommendations, I was very pleased with the outcome of our RFP. When I read CTC's recommendations, it was clear that doing this RFP with the assistance of experts resulted in a much better outcome than what we tried to do this on our own before. This competitive process moved us from proposals that didn't serve all our residents and requested we pay the $1 million for them to do it, not to mention their proposal violating Chapter 6 of our ordinance installing wires aerial all over town. Now it looks like we have a vendor that, at no cost to the city, will install an all-underground network protected from storms that knock aerial providers offline for days and sometimes weeks. It will provide fiber to the city as requested by the RFP and as committed to participate in the federal Affordable Connectivity Plan. We still need to negotiate term sheets, and I'm excited about partnering with this vendor for the provision of a high level of service to all our residents. Plus, we will decide how to use the $1 million that I already marked for broadband. Perhaps we should look at how we could provide public hotspots at our parks and other public gathering spaces. It looks like this competitive process has resulted in a great win for the residents of Moline. As it pertains to the waterfront where it's placed in our parks and trails, I am not opposed to doing this, but it was my understanding we earmarked our plums for things such as planting native plants to help with stormwater or hire consultants to help us with installing solar panels in the parking decks. This was a request, was this a request from the park board? Did they vote to recommend this expenditure to the council? It's my understanding that the subdivision and rezoning of the Doric Lodge is now back on the agenda after we were told it was being pulled from the agenda yesterday afternoon just before 5:00 p.m. As the council asks staff to research the ponds' responsibility for those ponds, as well as how subdividing the pond itself from all other economically valuable land may put this property at risk of being abandoned. What happens if the pond owner quits paying taxes and decides to walk away? With the pond being tied to no other economically viable piece of land, incentives, what incentives do we have to take on liabilities of the pond? I urge the council to table this issue again so we understand how to protect the city from creating a situation in which down the road, the residents, taxpayers, and Moline will end up with the expensive obligations to take care of this pond because no one else will have any economic incentive to do so. I have serious concerns as to why we are not enforcing our landscaping code as it has been enforced for years. Anyone who has driven past the Old Venture, now Storage America, or the old Toys R Us store are now big lots. You can see two great examples of how our code has been implemented, had a number of redevelopments in the past, and resulted in substantial improvements to the aesthetics of those lots and our city. Maggie refers to the handout that he provided to the council. For years, Sean, Chris, and Chris Mathias enforced our rehabilitation landscaping rules with no problems. I applaud them for the great work they did and how it has really improved our city over time. But now with no choice to council, no notice to council ever, staff has unilaterally decided to stop enforcing this ordinance at their own initiative. There is no complaint from any developer or challenge to how the code was being interpreted from anyone outside of the organization. If staff has concerns about interpretation of the code, those concerns should be brought to the Council of Recommendations on how to improve the code with work before staff changes how they're enforcing it. Previous staff was shocked and disappointed that we stopped enforcing this part of the ordinance. I encourage the council to direct staff to continue to enforce the code as it has been enforced for years, and also direct them to come back with language that staff feels is necessary to make the ordinance easier to read and more clear. Without this approach, the old Best Buy Planet Fitness lot will continue to be a treeless asphalt field that would be an eyesore on 16th Street for years to come. Thank you, Honorable Mike Watt. And that is all I have on public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move now to number seven, our presentation. I speak by graphic broadband recommendation. And we have our guest from CTC on the line, Mr. Talbot. Thank you for being with us.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. Can you hear me okay?
Absolutely. Yep.
Well, thank you very much. My name is Dave Talbot. I'm Director of Research Services at CTC Technology and Energy. And as many of you may know, we're a consultancy that serves the public sector and nonprofit sectors, providing independent advice on matters such as your broadband RFP. And we did facilitate the RFP on behalf of the city of Moline. And you have the materials that came back in your packet as well as our recommendation memo. And so I can speak to that and give you an overview of what the memo says and where we are in the process. If, and I'll just proceed until somebody tells me otherwise. It was a pleasure working with Bob and Adam on this, incidentally. The, just to orient everybody on where we are in the process, obviously you've got five responses, which is fantastic and really speaks to the interest that providers have in doing business in the city and deploying and improving their networks. These are proposals, all of which would require more discussion and review and negotiation. Any of these, if you were to try to pursue one or another, would require, you know, additional negotiations, discussions, and, you know, really getting into some of the details and working towards, you know, what's called a term sheet, which is a precursor to a contract. And so that's where we, or you on your own, or others, would help you go through that process to get these down to something that really answers every question thoroughly and then can be handed to, you know, the lawyers to render into an actual contract. So we are at the stage where obviously we've received the proposals and we've done the scan and viewed what was offered in these proposals and produced a memo of what we feel are the two strongest of the five proposals. As you all know, you receive proposals from the two incumbents, MediaCom and AT&amp;T, also from Genesio, who I know many of you are already familiar with from doing business in the city through your, through your city network, MetroNet, which is also operating nearby, and Windstream, which too has some markets nearby. Both Windstream and MetroNet are strong companies. And based on the proposals that they submitted, our recommendation is that you can proceed to negotiations with both of these companies. You know, at the simplest level, one of the main differentiators is that unlike the other three, these two companies did not request any financial contribution from the city of Moline, where Genesio was requesting 10 million, AT&amp;T was requesting 15.3 million, and MediaCom 22.1 million. That doesn't tell the whole story, though, because there are other elements that require more research to determine what actually is being offered. For example, you know, Windstream made the statement that they would provide all the fiber as requested, you know, that I should say city fiber, it's a fiber for city use, that they would provide it as requested. MetroNet said, you know, we want to negotiate that separately. So what that actually means would be something that would have to be, you know, worked through, you know, during the negotiations. And so that's, that's an example of the kind of thing where, once you get into it, you know, what's really on the table? And is there going to be a cost associated with that? It's something you would find out once we, once we would get into that. You know, we'd emphasize that, you know, they did, they did promise to do, you know, the ubiquitous coverage. The, all of the companies have some caveats to that. And no broadband provider can say, yes, I'll build everywhere where everywhere would include, you know, a private road or a multi-dwelling unit where they have to negotiate permission from the multi-unit building owner in order to get into the building. So none of them are going to be able to sit there and promise you at the outset that they can negotiate those agreements. Some had different counts and caveats on how, what ubiquity meant. So again, this is one where we would really need to see in a negotiation, what is that commitment consisting of? And we would want to see in a term sheet, you know, actual lists of spreadsheets of addresses to be covered and any that would be accepted from such coverage. So again, that's another important matter to work through as part of a negotiation. There is a significant caveat on the MetroNet proposal in that they're saying, they're saying they want to do mostly aerial, where Windstream is saying underground. So whether there's room on that, again, is something, and is Windstream... I should note that Windstream was the only one that said, yes, we'll build all underground. And Genesio had some caveats, saying, well, you might have some ravines that we can't go underground under a ravine. You know, AT&amp;T was half and half. MediaCom was not responsive. So, you know, is Windstream really going to build 100% underground? It's something, again, once you get into it in negotiations, you find out and whether MetroNet has some room there. So I think you get the flavor of there's some things to work through here. With those caveats having been stated, these are still very, two very strong proposals. And to have two ambitious, you know, well-resourced fiber-to-the-premise providers wanting to come in and build fiber-to-the-premise networks near or fully ubiquitously in your city is a very, very good place to be. Both of them have strong plans and reasonable pricing. MetroNet is saying they're going to get this done in a year, not two years, or altogether for two years. So this is why, you know, given that, given that these two proposals are both stronger than the other three, but also have things that need to be, you know, sort of ironed out and worked through is why we're saying it's time to start negotiating with both of them. So that's the, that's the overview of why we recommended negotiating with both Windstream and MetroNet. I can go on or answer questions or at your service as you, as you wish.
I think it's a good point for questions or comments from the council. Sir Muir?
Thank you. During that, during that build-out, we're seeing Windstream over two years. Would they be able to bring, you know, houses online, week by week or block by block? Or would it be, you know, would it be after, after the other two years? How does that work?
So typically, they're going to be rolling it out and signing people up as soon as they can get people connected, because then they can start getting the revenue. And that would be one of the things we would sharpen in a negotiation. But I would not have any doubt that as, as these companies would be building and as they go through, they're going to be wanting to connect and sign people up, you know, as soon as they can, because then they're getting their revenue coming in.
Dave, does your company have a history of negotiating these type of contracts or term sheets with the providers?
Yes, we do. Our president, Joanne Hobus, has been doing this for about 20 years and is quite, quite experienced in this. I've been at the company five years, so I would be assisting her. But those negotiations would be conducted by Joanne Hobus, the president of CTC and the director of business development.
Mr. Talbot, I'm kind of, I'm really mostly fascinated about the concept of underground. And can you talk a little bit about the technology that is proposed for this? And I'm kind of thinking, are they going to use conduit? Will there be extra room in the conduit? Would we, as a city, be able to possibly also use that for other purposes down the line, et cetera?
Yes, so the RFP has written, sought for the providers to, I believe we asked for six strands of fiber. First of all, asked it to be all underground, which, no, we don't provide legal advice, but we understand that there is an ordinance in the city that requires underground construction. The legal aspects of that, I would have to defer to your, I should say, you would want to talk to your lawyer about the applicability and enforceability of that. But that was the request in the RFP, was to follow your ordinance, build all on underground. And bottom line is that Windstream came back and said, yep, we'll do that. And, and, and MetroNet said, we'll do, we'll do aerial. And with, with, MetroNet's point was, well, it's already aerial. So yeah, this is an area that we have to, we have to work through. As to fiber for the city use, we asked in the RFP to provide, I believe it was six strands of fiber everywhere that the network goes. And I believe it was 12 strands on major, along major roads and that we connect a certain number of streetlights and traffic cameras, as spelled out in one of the appendices of the RFP. And again, you know, the Windstream said, yep, we'll do all of that, which is a lot, by the way. And then MetroNet said it requires negotiation separately. So all of that was, was written into the RFP with, you know, with Bob's input and Adam's input of, you know, we want to make sure that we get some fiber for city use. That fiber is going to be, any provider is going to say, you know, if they provide it, they're going to say, you have to have it be non-commercial use. And they don't want to have you turn around and then, you know, lease it out to a competitor, so. to have you turn around and then, you know, lease it out to a competitor, so. But it will be there for city use. So those things were written into the RFP and described what the responses were from the two top recommended companies.
Thank you.
Anyone else question or comment? Sir lawyer?
Thank you. We're not negotiating, we're negotiating with both of them, but yeah, we'll just choose one.
Correct.
And that's your recommendation? If the council wanted to just go with one, now they would need to let me know that, correct?
Uh, yes, you know, our recommendation is, you know, obviously if you're negotiating with one, you're going to, well, it's recommendation speaks for itself. But yes, at the end of the day, you want to do business with one and not two. And in fact, it says explicitly in, I believe it was the MetroNet proposal, that if there's already fiber to the premises somewhere built by somebody, they will not build, they won't, what they call overbuilds, because there's already somebody else providing fiber to those locations, they're not going to go try to compete when there's already somebody else doing it. Right now, you don't have anybody providing fiber to the premises to residential in the city of Moline, as far as we understand it.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sias.
What would happen, let's say we go with one of these two, with what's currently there that is with MediaCom? Is that just left? Do they have anything to do with removal, or how does all that work?
Um, as I answered, let me know if I'm misunderstanding your question, but MediaCom is obviously your cable provider. And so they're providing coax service into households and that's whatever standard service with probably pretty good download speeds and then upload speeds aren't as strong. In many cities, like, you know, Moline is pretty typical that you have the cable company and then you have the legacy phone company offering DSL, which in your case is AT&amp;T. And then when a new fiber provider comes in in a situation like this, the cable company will still be in business and they typically then have to up their game to compete, because the new guy is going to be, has a better technology, he can do the same upload and download, and you've got competition. So you kind of, you kind of want that. You want to have competition if you can make it happen. And in this scenario, with one of these two that we're recommending, you then have somebody competing with MediaCom. So I suppose they could, you know, pull up stakes and leave, but that's not really what would happen typically, is that they would stay there and try to keep their business and up their game with better service, maybe better pricing. That's speculation, I don't know what would happen, but that's often what happens in these kinds of situations. But giving, but we don't recommend you give $22 million to MediaCom. We don't recommend that you go with their proposal, if that, if that was your question.
Do you have anything further for us, Mr. Tomlin?
I do not. You know, that was, that's, that's the overview and we're happy to answer other questions down the road in email or with a call with Bob and staff. Otherwise, we'll sit tight and let us know if you need us to move forward with negotiations and would like us to help you with that.
Yes, so I think at this point, our, the need is to give direction to Bob on that topic. So you need to hold the council in some manner on what your desire is to have them start that negotiation process.
Since it's an informational, we can make a motion, direct, directing step.
Yes, I believe you can, yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion to follow the recommendations from Mr. Tomlin to negotiate the two firms, Windstream and MetroNet, and to utilize their expertise and services in those negotiations. I was second.
Questions second by Alderman Williams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. There's your direction.
We have a great life, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Sounds good. Thank you all, all very much. It was a pleasure meeting with you today.
I guess that's where all your work.
Thank you. Hope we see that.
Yes, yes.
We'll be out there getting fiber next week.
Very.
Very, yeah.
Very, very fiber, excuse me. I missed that second D R P. Thank you so much.
All right. Moving to number eight, do we have questions on the agenda? Hearing none, our agenda items start with 9.1, resolution approving the use of foreign fire tax funds up to $23,000 toward the refurbishment of the Moline Firefighters Memorial Stone as recommended and approved by the Foreign Fire Tax Board at the April 12, 2022 meeting.
Motion approved, second.
All right, motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Waldrum. Discussion.
I would just let you know that the current funding status of that foreign fire tax fund is at $880,000, so this is a smaller one.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 10.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code Ofordnance is Appendix 5, thereof always stop intersections by removing the intersection of 19th Avenue and 35th Street. You agree with me?
Not really much. I mean, the traffic engineer, engineering committee received the request, evaluated and made the recommendation, that's a good point.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, sir, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Tini. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 9.3, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code Ofordnance is Appendix 5, thereof always stop intersections by removing the intersection of 3rd Street and 8th Avenue. What is it? Oh, excuse me, 18th Avenue. Thank you. Is there a motion or an overview?
Motion.
Motion approved.
Thank you. You guys can speak up. Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Waldrum. Discussion. Parting parcel of the same committee recommendations.
Pretty much all, yeah. These items come directly from the traffic committee, based on requests that have been assessed and evaluated by the committee, and then recommendations for the county council, especially if they relate to traffic control devices such as sound sensor traffic signals.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
And no parties.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 9.4, a resolution authorizing the Parks and Recreation Director to purchase water fountain slash bottle fill stations from most dependable fountains, Inc., for the amount of $102,551.7.
Motion approved.
Motion by Alderman Tini.
Second.
Second by Alderman Masias. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Waldrum.
Your honor, I noticed that the package says 75,000. I'm wondering about the jump from 75,000 to 102,000.
Mr. Griffin, can you explain? I know it's in your attached documents.
Yes, so the approved, unrestricted approved parka funding is for 75,000. So the two lists that I provided, the first one is for 65,000, roughly 65,000, and it's the most people within the city for like destination parks and whatever, parking. If we were to do both lists that include some of the neighborhood parks like Carson's Park, V Lee, Qantas, some of those, it would be a total of 102,000. I did speak to Carol, there is unrestricted, unallocated parka funding that could support that 27,000. If not, we would just do the first list.
Yes, Mr. Walter. Carol, what was the park board's recommendation? If funding could come to do them all or?
So this was not taken to park boards. Originally, when this was discussed, this is more of the environmental group and the utilities recommendation. And, but since it's going into parks, that's why I asked if they wanted me to bring this forward. I haven't had a park board yet to discuss it with them, other than with the park board president, and he thinks this is a wonderful idea. I mean, you see everyone walking around with refillable bottles at their parks and they struggle currently with the ones that we have, because their regular water fountains that we have do not work for filling up bottles. These also would include the pet gardens as well, which, I mean, over half the houses in Moline have dogs, so this would be that.
It's not an exaggeration, or is that a...
It's like 15, it's like 15% or something. It's, it's very, it's very high. I thought this was there.
Still have the ability to get a, like, traditional drinking fountain, you can get a drink of water, or my...
Yeah, so there's actually four parts to it. Bottle fill station on the top, pet fountain on the bottom, AKA accessible fountain, and then a regular hike fountain as well, so it's four parts to it.
Yes, Mr. Walter.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the picture and this, you know how tall that is, how that, would somebody, this is the person be able to?
Yes, this water fountain that we wanted compared to some of the cheaper, at least the less expensive ones on the website, this water fountain is completely AKA accessible.
Any further questions? Just so I understand, there's a combination, I see, of replacing older water fountains and also reading the need of the, the group like utilities talking about reducing load from single-use plastics.
Yes, correct.
And pushing, moving people to more reusable.
Yeah, so when we sat down and started talking about the locations and the ones that currently have it compared to the ones that don't, one of the examples is like Prospect Park. We've got one up at the top of it where the playground is, but there is none down by the, there's no water fountain down by the restrooms and the park pavilion around the pond. That park gets heavily used, it would be very easy to put one maybe two of the two restrooms on them. It's just like...
Yes, oh, sorry, I thought that was... Anything further? Yes, Mr. Walter.
I didn't understand, are we voting on the vote or are you just deciding?
That's what the motion is. If you wanted to change it, you'd need to make an amendment.
I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, and now we move to our informationals. City landscaping regulations, Mr. Sappolis, can you just make sure your microphone is actually pointed toward you?
This mic will really pick you up.
He's my... Yes.
It's so much better.
I believe that you all have a memo from Mark Henry from our firm about this issue. And I want to start off by emphasizing that we are not in any way rendering the opinion that your code is bad on landscaping or that. It should not be enforced. We were asked by staff to give an interpretation of whether the best buy building, now undergoing remodeling as a planned fitness, would now have to comply with new landscaping regulations. We looked at the definition of both non-conforming structures and non-conforming sites in your code. Now, it is our belief, and we have no information to the contrary, that the building itself is conforming. On the other hand, the site, the property, is non-conforming, because it does not meet the current landscaping and possibly parking regulations. Now, those are two separate definitions in your code. Then we look at the section that Chris Mathias highlighted, which is 35-3112, which addresses when a non-conforming structure or site must meet the new landscaping regulations into what they're creating. Now, in our review of this, while yes, 3112 loves non-conforming structures and sites in the one section, we have no reason to interpret that by addressing those both in one section, that it would determine otherwise conforming site into a non-conforming site for purposes of applying regulations, simply because they're included in the same paragraph. I would also note that the sections of paragraph C that Chris Mathias highlighted deals with primarily remodeling non-conforming structures. It does have one subsection on changing sites. And it is our interpretation that in no way was the code meant to require or change a conforming site to a non-conforming site, simply because on its area, a conforming structure to a non-conforming structure, simply because it sits in a non-conforming site. So again, this is a policy decision for council. If you would like clarity in your code to express the intent of both Alderman Meyer and Chris Mathias, so that a conforming structure and a non-conforming site would, as part of the remodel, have to also meet the current landscaping regulations, we will make that revision for you. We do not believe that your code currently states that or requires that. And so again, our opinion is focus only on the best buy building, not for every building or every piece of property. And so we were asked for that legal interpretation, we provided it. I understand that there may be some vagueness in the way that 3112 addresses both structures and sites in one paragraph. And if so directed, we will clarify it. It is our opinion that currently it does not destroy the differentiation provided outside in the code, or would change a conforming site to a non, I'm sorry, conforming structure to a non-conforming structure, simply because it sits in a site. So I welcome questions or direction.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Well, I think the intent originally, you can't argue with storage, American Big Lots, they changed hands, it's become much more attractive property, so that was the whole intent. And priorly, when drafted that language, Chris, he was operating during the council's wishes under that. So if there's a problem with the language, you need them to do that. I think we should just massage that and go forward, because either definitely, we shouldn't go throughout the city with existing businesses and try to make a reform, but certainly with something changes hands, that's our opportunity to dress things up a little bit, and it's not unreasonable.
Other thoughts? Does, uh, people agree with Alderman Williams? Yes, Mr. Williams?
I agree. Uh, I'm curious applicability of this even if the site and structure are given to owners, which is not uncommon with parking lots. Um, because i- in this case, it could still be a non-conforming site because of, it doesn't meet the landscaping requirements. But the renovations are being done on a structure which may be conforming but have separate owners. Is there any ambiguity with ownership also?
There is no, um, differentiation currently in the code that addresses that. We could also address that as well.
I think about South Park Mall, if there's a, we, Ashley, right? Uh, we, we, we helped with Ashley. They brought in and did all this reconstruction. Did they have to also update parking lot or is it because it's a mall, it's a separate? The mall owns the parking lot, not Ashley and furniture. Is it not applicable? So I don't know what point we want to stop. With landscape improvements in situations like that, strip malls have the same thing. Uh, but I can see the benefit of, you know, the beautification.
Well, and, and you raised a very good point about the structure itself being very different than the site that it sits on. So in this case, there is no change to the exterior or the land that best by sits on. It's all internal changes. So that does, um, establish a very good example of the, um, ambiguity and also supports our interpretation, which it sounds like was not what was the intent of this council or at the very least, not the way that staff or prior staff interpreted it. And, and again, it's, it's a hard policy decision to make. Um, I would point out that to meet the current landscaping regulations will add to the cost of any interior renovation, which we may not present a problem, especially here in San Diego or on the main street. Um, and, and that will have to be addressed.
Of course. Is that the intention? Uh, even interior renovation requires external landscaping under new owners?
Gentlemen? I'd say some guesses. Um, Mr. Williams?
That's a tricky one because, uh, good examples of that up on the seventh floor, uh, the old Kmart has changed to a U-Haul. I don't believe anything's gone on in that particular parking lot in two. And yet, there's been major modifications to the old Kmart, uh, similar to what's gone on at Best Buy. And I get your point on some, there's a lot of remodels. There's just internal remodels. And I'm not sure I want to trigger the landscaping ordinance on all.
I think, if I could, my, it's, it sounds as though there's enough ambiguity that we have to have some research done on how, how this can be done to get landscaping beautification done, but also not, and also not make it overly cumbersome to meet these requirements because we want to spur development here in Moline. Um, and, and I did see head nods with, in regard to, um, Alderman Williams saying that we need to get toward the intent, but, you know, give us language. I'm summarizing that he said, yes, we want some language. So it's a comment, I'm hearing from the council, a combination of, yes, we need to decrease the ambiguity. We need new language. And we need to have research done on how we can get to where we want to be, which is some landscaping improvements without overweight, being overly cumbersome in the code. So we have to look at what other places do and all of that.
That was my point. Generally, Moline, we're not inventing wheel. So it would be good to see some other examples, some other like-sized companies that have implemented this, um, but their language says.
And by the way, nobody is reinventing the wheel. So, um, but and to be clear, on the best buy building, it's only interior.
So I also want to make sure I'm hearing from this council correctly. What I think I'm hearing is that we we're pretty unanimous in believing that landscape beautification in our parking lots is a goal.
Yes.
It is a goal. It's just how we get there that needs to be clarified. That how you're all feeling of?
Considering extra scenarios as well, internal versus external, yeah, all guys.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. They, no, it's a kind of, they are doing some work. They're re-dividing the building, re-signage. They did, they reshaped the front a little bit, made doors and everything. So that, is that still considered internal work?
They're not changing, are they not?
Not changing the building quite, but I think that's what I'm sure is it.
Okay, so you have enough clarity on direction, Mr. Sappolis? Okay, thank you. So then we move to our, uh, ten point two, accessory dwelling unit, ADU code amendment. Informational, Mr. Foley and, uh, Mr. Uppa.
Going up, sure. Uh, giving you any council members, uh,
There we go.
So it's just a little informational, um, which should be attached to, uh, the agenda here. So there is a table that was prepared by the planning commission. This is their recommendations. As they broke out the various, uh, regulatory elements of what they would like to see in accessory dwelling units. Um, and, uh, and that's over si- six different types of accessory dwelling units, like virgin. I don't remember all of them. I'll talk them out across the table, but you could read through those. So for instance, they say they want a maximum of six hours per day. They also say that they want accessory dwellings. We only in our two zoning district, which is single family blocks. Because in other zoning districts, multifamily blocks are allowed. So what's the point of having an accessory dwelling for multifamily that's already, has been a lot of use? Um, they want to do it as a special use permit, um, in our two, uh, separately converted. And the reasoning behind that was especially expressed by Commissioner Fitzsimmons was that the residents, when they buy into a single family area, that's what they expect they are getting. And, um, they, he felt that if we went and changed the ordinance and just legalized white without special use permit or two, uh, that they wouldn't have any say in what's changing their neighborhood. As adding rental gains and things like that to the neighborhood. And, um, he thought that that was even the citizens who are on deal who had already bought it and gave everybody under the, uh, assumption that if buying into a single family dwelling area. And the site plan review would be required to do other things like make sure windows aren't looking at each other, that kind of thing. That, uh, appropriate setbacks are applicable to a particular site, a particular area, because this is across the board. And as you know, there are many different kinds of neighborhoods in the city where the lots are very tight sometimes. Some have a lot of room, some they have, um, large garages, some they just have, you know, the small ones in the back that detach, that kind of thing. So that is, uh, basically what the planning commission is recommending is those, uh, policy statements put into that table. And, and a lot of the stuff they, uh, decided to lead to the building code, like what, what meters, like, man, you're stuck with meters, uh, those sorts of things. So there's several lines in there that say with the building code because those are issues that are addressed into the building code. And the feeling is that they want to keep zoning zoning and building code, building code ordinance, and they don't want to mix the two together. That's, uh, a synopsis of, uh, what they were thinking. And of course, there's the definition of family and they chose to, they wanted to, uh, keep accessory dwelling units in the balance, so to speak, rather than having them as rental units. That's the recommendation. I know there's some debate about that, whether it's, uh, whether that's a good thing or not. Um, Alderman Went asked several questions about that, um, and which, uh, David Sullivan, Nancy Blink, City Attorney, tried to answer those questions as, as was regulation law, just, uh, the planning commission felt. So that's the synopsis thing, uh, certain questions, that's my ability.
With the special use permits, if the property changes owners, would the new owner then have to apply?
Unless there is a condition, the normal, the normal way a special use permit works is that it goes with the plan. However, you could conceivably add a condition or something to that special use permit, such as empty page counting, what they used to do is, um, accessory dwelling units for, um, for relatives, like senior citizens, like parents, just like that. And they would renew them every five years and, um, they had a condition in there that was only for that family member. And that once the, uh, the member left for any reason, like ceased or something like this, they would have to convert the unit back into, um, let's say, a public lot or whatever it had been. So conditions can be added, this is based by these spaces of special use permit. You're looking for compatibility with that area, um, with regulations, you know, maximum business care.
My question's more for Tony. Tony, have you had a chance to review this in relation to water sewer services? Shut offs, stuff of that nature related to billing?
No. Uh, but I will tell you that, um, EPA has a very precise definition of what a water service is. It's in comparison to what a water main is. So we would have to take a look at that and be certain that we're not extending a water main into a property, branching off into, uh, another, um, living unit. So, but I don't think it's interoperable.
You and your vision are reasonable, a separate meter.
Yes, definitely separate meter. That's a requirement of our ordinance.
And it is separate shut off. That's where it's tricky, that's why I'm asking.
Yes.
It could very well be that the ADU stops being, how do you shut off? You shut off the main house, so to speak, when you're after the ADU.
Yeah, so, uh, the way we handle that now is council authorized change to the code, uh, in recent years that require a locking valve at the meter. And in theory, this, uh, uh, ADU is going to be under the same ownership as the main dwelling unit. So we would have that locking valve in the main unit to have access to everything. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Williams.
I guess I have a similar question, and I know that we don't run the natural gas, but that is a concern, I figure as well. As if it's a freestanding unit, it probably needs an, an heating source, uh, later time. So, uh, would it need to have a separate dress, um, legally defined as such so that, um, facilities, you know, don't be appropriately do, uh, as they had ever run the gas line, et cetera. Safety concerns, building, etc. I just, in my mind, a freestanding unit has a sewage, I think, uh, the whole coast of complications. Seem like a lock for most homeowners.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I'm guessing that's why the planning commission says, let's turn that over to the building folks.
Oh, yeah. Gas lines, sewer lines, laterals, all this stuff is generally never as a.
Right, so what you're saying is those questions for someone who's applying for this permit, right, would get addressed in the process of seeing if they could get approved because the building folks would have to weigh in on what can be done? Is that how it would work to solve those problems?
To do the special use permit?
No, yeah, to, to address these issues with utilities.
Well, they would have to get a building permit to do any work at the building. So that's where it would trigger.
Right.
Alderman Timmy made a good, a good question, though, on the address. Would they have a separate, separate address? That would be, uh, so.
Well, in the code, that's actually public works, but, um, I don't see, uh, any problem with doing that with a separate address. Sometimes the problem is you might not have enough numbers right there at the spot to do that.
Is that an issue with post office, with federal, uh, agencies?
Well, we're the ones, we're the address authority, so they have, they would like to see the lives, I suppose. Basically, local control of, of addressing is in order.
I have another question. I, I'm wondering if it's redundant at all or if I just am misunderstanding the categories. There's two categories, uh, attached and unattached, right, as overarching categories. So then why do we differentiate with attached garages and unattached garages? I mean, the larger, I'm looking at simplicity of interpretation, simplicity of enforcement and applicability. And so I'm wondering, what's the reason for extra categories when it feels to me like those two, attached and unattached, would cover a lot of things?
Well, the, the setbacks are going to be different a lot of times for detached buildings, because they just are in the code already now.
Right, but, but why have specified garages as well as a whole other category of attached and detached? You see what I'm saying? That to me seems redundant when you already have bigger cat, these other categories of attached and detached.
Um, well, I guess, I don't know if I have an answer to that specifically because when we're going through these and talking about it in the planning commission, and we do have the planning commission chair here, uh, if you'd like to chime in.
Do you have an answer for me?
Commissioners too, uh, and I'd be glad to come up and answer some questions if, uh, if you'd like.
That'd be great, if you don't mind. Mr. Matt?
Well, those are all, no, ma'am, Frank, I'm chair of the planning commission. And, uh, we were, uh, David Sullivan, and we looked at, we hopefully have the six categories because there are six different ways to handle things. I hope, excuse me, I understand your question about the garages and that stuff, but some garages are detached and some are.
Right.
And once again, when we talk about a garage, that does not count into square footage of a house, so.
That's the reason for separating it out from the bigger category. Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, when we're talking about square footage, okay, it's the main floor area. It's not the second floor or third floor of a house. It's just the main floor area, not completely the garage. So, um, that's our definition.
Thank you.
So David, uh, from past things, we have to reuse his knowledge that he has. He said, you really want to have these six categories, and that's why we defined the six.
Okay.
So we don't get in trouble later on. Um.
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
And David was a very thoughtful and hopeful guy.
Great.
Any other questions? The family definition, once again, the one we have now in the city is very archaic. And David said before we even talk about ADUs, we have to change the definition of the family because it does not meet today's standards. So I think I'd raise my stance about, about there.
I have it. Any other questions or comments?
Just, your honor, I apologize. Um, the, the, the desire that the occupants are only members of the family. I would just kind of like to hear why, um, I know that Alderman Went did mention, they originally say there's a scenario in which the owner could live in the ADU and rent out the house or use it, I don't want to say supplemental income, but that is a possibility. Uh, without really adding too much, um, extra traffic to the neighborhood, you could double density of the neighborhood. Uh, so I'm just kind of interested in hearing the thought process behind, uh, why the recommendation is to limit the dwellers to members of the family versus college kids.
If you start renting out the other part of the house, it's, it's going to be like a new place. Uh, you have to, you have the owner and that. You have to, you have the owner in that and ADUs is for mother-in-laws and people in the house, but also the difference of family can be aunts and uncles. And I, like, you see a lot of homes, oh, even in Moline, there are many homes that have several families in one house, but they don't have a separate address, they don't, they have one combination. So this is for the people that, you erase your family, your, your kids want to move into your house, but you want us to stand the same neighborhood. ADU is perfect for that relationship.
Okay, thank you.
And we did not want to use it for being, being absolutely, so rent off or like things like that.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from the council?
Thank you to the planning.
Yes, thank you. So, yes, we need direction for staff based on what has been placed in front of the council. It seems that we obviously have more to debate of, of what we want to see, but we need to have something in front of us. So turning these recommendations into an ordinance is what I'm thinking might be the next step, but I need to hear from council.
I'll make a motion. We have draft ordinance prepared for the council.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Elton and Walter. Discussion on that? To, and that, if we understand, is to draft an ordinance, or we look for the draft in ordinance based on these recommendations. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Carol Barnes, it's been so long since you've visited us.
I'm really happy to be here.
Now you have to hold that thing close to you. There we go.
I'll give you all the fancy mics.
Okay, there we go.
But thank you, your honor and the council. I'm very happy to be here tonight to present to you preliminary financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2041. Baker and Tony will be releasing their final draft for the audit on June 7th, but I wanted to take the opportunity to go through a little more detailed review, but they will be presenting on the subject. Usually they keep it on a pretty high level and I know there's so many funds in the city and the council quickly has questions. These are the preliminary financial statements and this is what we actually gave the auditors when they came in in April to begin the audit. So they actually audited our financial statements, our internal documents. They currently match the audit as the partner is now reviewing this in through two levels. The partners are viewing the third level. And as of today, I just verified it before I came over here, as of today, prior to the partners releasing the audit, we have no material weaknesses at all identified and no compliance issues on the same audit regarding all of our federal grants. So we keep our fingers crossed that I'll tell you the ARPA internal control for the same audit this year just getting established was a challenge and I'm very, very proud of our staff and all the department head staff that helps out with the controls necessary as well as we have a lot of help from the council. And so we are anticipating that the auditors are going to be giving us a clean opinion on all of our financial statements, that they are presented fairly and in all material respects, that there's no material loopholes. Very, very pleased with that. Again, our fingers crossed that holds through June 7th, but I don't anticipate any changes.
Kudos. I know Mr. Ledge wants to shout it from the rooftops, sorry. Kudos to you.
So with that, as you know, I could actually probably talk for hours on financial statements. It's a passion. But I promise, I'm going to watch the clock, I'm going to try to keep it breathing at a high level, but please ask questions as we go along. So I'm going to go through it rather quickly and as you know, I'm always available if you have any follow-up questions and you want me to keep eye clear, I'd be happy to do that as well. But before we leave here tonight, what I'm hoping is to give you a level of confidence that the city is indeed in excellent financial position. We have very healthy fund balances across all of our funds and we are following the plan that the mayor, as a council, as a city administrator, they'll cook before us all the department heads, without exception, we've been following that plan. And in addition, we have over $72 million of cash investments moving. So very, very healthy financial position in the green. And to begin with, and again, we'll go through this kind of quickly, if you turn to page two, I want to talk about the general fund, the main operating fund of the city. And if everybody finds page two, it's the very first column, and I'm going to take you down to the very bottom of the page. And net of pension obligation bonds, or $85 million, as you know, that flowed through on revenue as well as expenditures that out to the pension funds. Net of that, our total revenues came in at 2.7% over budget and our expenditures came in less than 1% under budget. So overall, very, very tight budget across the board. And if you see the bottom line down there, our ending fund balance in the general fund, Now we take that fund balance, as you know, and we subtract out cash advances that we've given to the tips and the SSAs. We've also subtracted out the $1 million that we've put aside for restricted cash for the pension obligation bonds in the future, if and when we may ever need that, hoping we won't. And we have also reduced in this year, three and a half million dollars that the council had committed towards the pool that did go over to the parks on in January. So if we net all of that out, our net fund balance in the general fund, $14,595,000. When we take that against our total expenditures, our net expenditures at the 0.5% high level of our policy, we are just shy of $2.5 million over the policy and additional cash reserves. So a very good financial position. We ended the year with $1.6 million under budget in the general fund. And again, almost every one of our departments is in the general fund and I congratulate them and I'm thankful for how well that they have managed their budgets. That fund balance equates to 30.12% for 108 days of fund balance. And as I mentioned, operating budget wise, all the departments came in in less than 1% under budget. So very, very tight budget. But on the revenue side, the 2.87% we came over, we had almost $350,000 of additional home rule tax that came in in the general fund. Our hotel motel tax was up $50,000 over the budgeted. And as if you remember during amended, we had also increased that back in November. The gas and electric is up, our food and liquor, $287,000 for food and liquor revenue, up and above our budget. The cable franchise and our telecommunications, however, did fall short, completed two of them about $200,000. And we anticipate those numbers will probably continue to drop off a little bit. This is what the trend is. We also had $48,000 of additional revenue on building permits, almost $600,000 in sales tax. And our use tax was actually down a little bit, it's about, down about $140,000 from last year. But I think that's because of all the sales tax from walking people, getting out, spending money within our community that helped offset that. The cannabis revenue is up $12,000. Our income tax revenue is up over $1 million over last year, $2020,000. And a lot of that was, is people were taxed on their unemployment benefits and as you remember, a lot of people got remates in the mail. That generated a lot of additional income tax that people had to pay tax on. But on the corporate side, our corporate replacement tax came in to almost $2.3 million over 2020. And as you remember, we've amended the budget to adjust for a lot of this and we added a lot of positions there at the end of the year. Just very, very pleased with how these numbers are turning in. And last but not least, with our ambulance. I know Jeff Snyder presented to council a couple of years ago with the change in the fees and, and how that through the Medicare, on how we're getting reimbursed. And the ambulance fees were up $253,000. The general funds are very, very solid financial position. So for the remaining funds, I'm not going to give you as much detail, I'm just going to kind of keep it high. And I'd like to actually go to the very last page in this document. You're going to have to turn it to the side. It looks like this. I've got something that's twisted. Now we're going to focus on the two yellow columns. And we've already talked about the general fund, so I'm going to skip right down into the general trust. The general trust is where we have many different funds that, that we keep and kind of safekeeping in our trust. And the ending fund balance, we're going to really focus on the second to the last column that's yellow, so we're going to have that. Our ending fund balance in the general trust is $697,000. That is up $231,000 from last year. That's largely from state and federal assistance for corporate issues. We've been hit the tourism fund. That fund balance is down about $66,000 from last year, but we are actually drawing that down. That's where we spend all of our special event money, like American and those types of city units. And then the next group of funds, I'm going to group them together, I'm not going to talk individually, but it's all of our major grant funds, the lead has net, healthy homes, single families, CDG COVID. Those fund balances can go up and down and it really depends on the timing of when we request reimbursements on the grants. And the state and the federal government are not totally reliable on timing reimbursement. Most of the time they are, but sometimes they can have some serious lags in us giving funds. So from a budget standpoint, getting reimbursed is what's made some of those fund balances change a little bit. But overall, we're right on target and even though the reimbursement on some of them might be slower, the grant money is still available and will be pulled down in this current year. So the next one to skip down to is the library fund. And we had anticipated that the library was going to be drawn down about $222,000, it's in blue column right before. But they actually ended the year pretty much even with last year. And the main reason for that is they didn't have some vacancies that they did not fill this last year. And they watched their budget like a hawk. That's one department, they are just very, very conservative on, on their budget. Going forward, I think they still have an open position, but we've budgeted them, we're being 100% staff now in 2022 and we've got the overtime, additional hours, all budgeted going forward and, and so library is going to be invested. On the parks department, which is the next big fund, you'll see that they have an actual fund balance of $4.7 million. And as you recall, we bonded last December for $3.6 million for half of that pool. Those bond proceeds for that first half of that payment is in that fund balance. But taking those bond proceeds out and some additional capital that they're proceeding in this fiscal year to spend, they have an actual ending fund balance of about $667,000 screen clear, which is a higher number than they have had in the last several years. Part of that is park maintenance, budget did come under budget. They just, they didn't have as many seasonal people that they were employed during the entire last year. The parks, the apartment budget is, is doing really well. CIT projects that were completed, they completed $736,000, so that's one of the higher amounts in recent years for capital projects. And again, they've got really solid dollars going forward over the next three years that the council had allocated this last year during the budget. And the next, the next fund here that I'll talk about briefly is on the captain's stable. And you'll see it's a negative fund balance of $1,182. That is that outstanding loan balance that they owe WPC, that they owe the city. And they did pay back about $50,000 during COVID. We let them stand down on some of their loan payments for a couple of months because they were closed, but they're back in full force and they're making their payments and we have a very good relationship with that company. The next fund is our motor fuel tax fund and you will see that they've got over $5 million in their fund balance. And I would like you to turn to page 84. I would. And I'm not going to go through all of this, but if you look at the top third of the page, this lists out all of the motor fuel projects that were budgeted. And that is the second column, the expected expenditures through December 31st, that's the end of budget, was $3.7 million. And projects did fall behind with construction because the year to date through December 31st, they spent $925,000. So there's about two, almost $2.8 million in excess that did not get spent last year. Again, those funds carry forward and I know now we've got a new public works director coming on board as well as a new engineer, engineering director that's going to come on board in a couple of weeks. So I know that that would be a high priority, both of those positions. But that's the breakdown by project, budget to action. Any questions on that? The next category, I'm going to have you put back to your, those yellow pages, the very last page there. The next category is all of our tips. And if you look down that actual fund balance, I know you're familiar with some of those fund balances being in negative and we're continuing to work towards positive balance. But in total, we have cash advances that are being paid on the general fund to the tune of $9,888,000. So we've got a ways to go to get those tips made whole. In addition, our water fund has contributed over $604,000 and $802,000 in revenue anticipation notes. WPCs, we catch flowing $333,000 for projects and in addition, $995,000 of revenue anticipation notes. And stormwater, cash flow of $90,000. Those cash flow items for those enterprise funds, as you recall, when we talked about tips last fall, we actually picked up some projects from prior years and we reallocated them against tips and it's going to take a while for them to cash flow these funds back. But it will be a good one going back into those enterprise funds, so it's all set. We will be updating the tip cash flows in June. Tara Osborne in community development, she always has to buy her annual tip report in June, as we'll be putting together that little tip booklet with updated cash flows and we'll get those all distributed to you in June. The next fund, if you turn the page. I'm not going to talk a lot of that, but it's our downtown, this is on our gap zones and the libraries, the Ryer Art Gallery, Central Fair, Park Cemetery, Ford and Higher, those funds are all right in sync. They've got good fund balances, again, right in line with what was budgeted, as well as the library trust, there's about $290,000. In our art fund, we've got $109,000. And I, I do want to speak to this because from a fund balance standpoint, we have over $10 million in cash investments, but we can only recognize in government funds the portion that is earned. Unless you have actually spent the money allocating the projects, it's not, it is unearned revenue until it's allocated. So the money is sitting there. We are also pulling this week, we're going to be, our We are also pulling this week, we're about to get to the week, our second half, but we should anticipate to get here the first part of June. So that, that'll be another $10.4 million that'll be coming to us in ARPA funds. I did want to mention very briefly that with our first quarterly report that we had to submit March 31st, the final ruling of the ARPA, it changed the formula. And instead of allowing 4.1% growth in revenues, they're actually giving governments 5.2% of growth, which is very nice, actually, a nice formula. But as you just heard, we were very fortunate that our revenues are also up. We looked at this every which way, we worked with our auditors, we did recalculations. And we think we're still in a really good position as far as the distribution of what we allocated, that unrestricted and restricted. But just please know, as these years go through, either through 2026, depending on how our revenues come in, it might change that mix-up between the restricted and the unrestricted. So we'll have to kind of keep our eye on that. So hopefully we've got some unallocated buckets to write down. We're fine overall. Am I going too slow or am I? The next category I'm going to jump down to is our CIT. And I'm actually going to have you turn to page 86, just like to do with our motor fuel. So you can see the list of projects. Page 86. And again, this is about the top third there, you'll see capital projects on, if everybody sees it. Going down, go about halfway down the page, you'll see total miscellaneous projects on the capital projects one. Got to find my, my paper here as well. And there is a list there here. The total expected on miscellaneous projects for capital, if we go through down to the very bottom of the page, we had budgeted $4,928,000 in projects. We spent $3,879,000. So we've still got about a million, little over a million dollars of projects that are, are behind and did not get constructed. But again, we're in the queue, they've been identified. I know the engineers are, are ready to jump on that work. I also wanted to highlight in capital projects that we had almost a half a million dollars of additional home rural sales tax that came in. So on top of this million, going forward, we're going to have another half a million dollars, putting the engineers come back with next project list for next year. And if I go back here then to this yellow page, instead of focusing on this for our enterprise and our internal service fund, I actually want to work off of the cash flows because it paints a better picture of the financial position. So if you go back to page 64, we're just going to do a snapshot of these funds. We're going to be talking about these a lot more here in the months to come. But the water fund, if you look halfway down the page, you'll see the two yellow lines. Look at the line right above it. The net increase in cash and cash equivalents, the fund actually increased $1.2 million. And it's because of a couple of things. They continue to have vacancies in staff and they were under budget with some capital projects. And the capital projects for, for water, I was thinking I wrote those down. Is on page 87, if you want to take a look, yeah, take a look at those. Those projects, there's about $787,000 of projects that went constructed. Again, the money is there. And I know they're going to be doubling up here with some of those trenchless and mining programs for the red water. But we'll please that the fund balance at the complexion point is going up. The revenue does continue to decline. From 2019, the revenue was $9.6 million. And in 2021, it has decreased to 8.7. So the usage on the water is down primarily. So I know they're undergoing a rate study, they're looking at flow, and they're going to be coming back with comprehensive study results to present to the council. If we take a look at the WPC, the next one, they came in with an excess of $300,000, and it's the line above the yellow, $300,000. So they're basically even with what we had budgeted. Their revenues again are flat and not so much declining. But again, they had some open positions and that's the reason that those numbers are up. In stormwater, they were significantly under with suppliers as well as employees. And they came under budget by $463,000. So they've got some nice reserves. Stormwater, as you know, the value is a bit concerned going forward with stormwater money. They've got a little pocket now, but again, they're looking at the fee review ongoing. And in the sanitation, that is a slow drawdown. Those revenues are actually not keeping pace ongoing. So again, we're taking note of that. And the water fund, it's nice that we've got that Silvis extra water line going through. That's going to help that fund as well. So the next fund to turn to is our internal service funds on page 73. And across the board, I want you to look at that line, again, right on top of the yellow, if everybody can. It's our health insurance, retirees, IT, public safety, and our liability funds. Each and every one of those funds pretty much are right in line with budget. Our health insurance claims came under, I don't know why it's good, $131,000. Our retiring fund, $129,000. IT, $412,000. As you know, they had a vacancy is, is one of them. There are also some capital items that were just deferred, they, they did not purchase. And as you know, we just approved for the police department to put lat cops in all of the squads. So that's going to be pulling down a portion of those fund balances. In public safety, you'll see a drawdown of $123,000. I believe the number was $180-some thousand that was used to purchase the fire alerting system here this last year. And then the last one here on this page is the liability insurance. We've been talking about there's a significant fund balance and we are doing a slow drawdown. And we've been working with our attorneys and we're kind of doing an idea or average of incurred but not reported claims is one of the largest general entries that get made from an audit standpoint. And we're starting to do that in a different way. So we'll be seeing that fund drawing down over the next five years to about $2.5 million. And then the last couple of funds here, you turn the page, is our facility, facility management, they came in, again, look at the line right above the yellow line, $198,000. Again, payments to suppliers is the biggest reason, paying under budget. And they did have some vacancies in the custodial house as well. And I think their family pulled staff. So that's great going forward. In our fleet fund, this is the biggest one with carryover funds. They actually came in budget $1.4 million in cash reserves over anticipated dollars. But they currently have $1,970,000 of vehicles at the end of December and they're not being delivered and we don't pay until we get delivery. So we'll be doing a budget amendment in the current year as soon as we get delivery. And there's a few of those who still don't have delivery and it's been over a year with some of the bigger trucks. So that fund is one we're going to have to continue to monitor. Again, they also have vacancies and they had some reductions in their operating. Overall, their cash balances are going to come in almost $500,000 more than we had anticipated net of all those vehicles. And so that's a very brief summary of the 2021 budget. And then I'd like to take, if you don't have any questions, or if you do on that pre-lesson, but I'd like to do a very quick review. It's the handouts that were in the very back of your binder. I want you to do a very quick update there on, as we move into next year. And I really feel that there's a great need that we can, we try to get in front of inflation. And that we need to get our 2022 budget amended as quickly as we can. So we're buttoning up the audit and we're going to move right into amending the budget. And we'll be coming back to, we're going to be working on it through the month of June, end of July. We'll come back to probably the end of July. And because we need to look at the long-term sustainability for it going forward. You've all heard numbers of inflation jumping as high as, you know, 8.3, it was 8.5, it's down a teeny bit. We're going to have to continue to monitor that. Some of the biggest impacts that we've seen going forward, all of our fuel costs, everything's talking fuel. But it's not just gas, it's fuel, oil, and even the tires are all associated with those types of, of costs. Vehicles overall, it's not just the delay in getting them, but it is the cost is going up astronomically. And I would like to give one example to you because it's going to be coming forward to you in the next couple of weeks, is the fire department is looking at replacing ambulances. It's actually in the budget for 2024, two years ahead, to be replacing marine ambulances. This was in the budget. They contacted, they went out for bids. And they have now been informed that there is a 20 to 24-month lag in getting vehicles. So the fire department will be coming forward to you to see if they can at least get the order in early. But in addition to the lag, we had set aside $554,000 in the vehicle fund. They're actually coming in at $952,400,000 more. And what I'm understanding is by June 1st, we've got a bid locked in. But as of June 1st, those costs are going, will be going up 12% more for new people. But the good thing, as you heard, we have solid reserves in the general fund. Even our fleet fund has money. And we have some unallocated ARPA funds. And we can actually use restricted ARPA funds to help pay for these types of things. So when that comes back, that'll be a decision for the council. But I'm thankful that we have options and hopefully they'll be able to make a good decision in that regard. Other questions?
Is that 400,000 each ambulance?
No.
All the other? For all three?
Yeah, for all three. And the liability fund, they've reached out to Matt, our liability officer. And in the past, they have, it's like a lift for the ambulances to help the firefighters that are not lifting. In the past, they've used liability funds to help offset those. That would be $150,000 at the 400. So they may be looking for $250,000 of that amount. And it's restricted funds that will, will apply. We can use restricted funds.
That's a question.
That's great. But again, the private department, I'm not going to be putting together the one I talked about about a year before. But that's just one example. As we go into this next year, it won't just be ambulances. There'll be additional items that will be kind of overwhelming, I think, that, that could come in much higher.
So is our, is our insurance go up and would the, and price of these vehicles?
I mean, yes, I mean, we have done, I mean, well, the, the way that they're valued. And additional items, when we talk about inflation and it will really keep our engineering department busy, is as we all know, all of our CIT projects need to be reestimated. Because as we've been going out here, they're all coming in higher. And that's part of the delay to everyone to find, you know, people that need the contract to do the work or outside engineering can help with it. It's just the back mark. But they're going to need to revalue the projections of those projects. Also, we need to look just at the timing. We still have some unfilled vacant positions. We've got a ton of them coming on board. But as we budgeted them, the way we budgeted them is different even they've come on board. So we're going to fix all that when we go through it. Overall, cost of goods and services, again, we'll be looking at that. And lastly, would be the reestimate of our revenues. Very solid revenues here in '21. But what will they be or what, you know, how do you budget that going forward? Will people hunker down and not spend as much money in some regards? So that's a decision that we'll have to make jointly on how to proceed with that. We'll also be updating our property taxes. We got our certified levy from the, from the county. And our levy rate, as you know, we reduced the levy. We projected it to be 1.93. Taking into consideration all the abatements, it came in at $1.94. It's 1.9437.
Correct.
And so it's going to generate about $25,000 more than what we anticipated. So we came in with our estimates very, very plus. However, I do need to let you know, we, we talked about this briefly and there was not a good way to estimate it at the time. But we knew when we reduced that levy, that that was also part of, it's going to reduce the TIPS and the SSAs. Because that levy rate is used in conjunction on the increment with the schools, the county, the colleges, and us. And that calculation is going to have an impact of reducing our tip revenue of $204,000 across all of our tips. So as we stated earlier, we've got some short calls in those tips. It's $204,000 this year. If the levy rate stays the same, that's going to be a continued short as we move forward. So I just wanted to point that out. And again, when we update those cash flows, you know, we will go through all that at the time. Just very quick lay to land, got a couple of things left. If you take a look at that handout that says the fund deputies and the fund balances, I'm only going to talk about the first page. Says statement of revenues and expenditures in 2022 over the inside. You see this handout? See, it was in the back of your book. Did you read that? What we did is we took the 2022 fund deputy pages. And this is what we put in your budget document last call when we adopted the budget. We have now updated all those, it's the Indian balances, it's the Indian balances from last year. The new ones on top of it layered in. I just wanted to give the general fund. And again, layering Memphis, that first column down the row, Indian cash or Indian fund balance in the general fund, $25,033,000. And that is reduced by the $3.5 million of a drawdown through the core. But if we do our same calculation on the net fund balance as a percentage, as we calculated for 25%, we anticipate if all of our numbers hold for 2022, and they will change because of the amendments we're going to do, we anticipate to be up about $5 million. We've got money, we'll be talking about during budget. And we, we need to kind of have a plan as we move into the budget to talk about that. I do want to state the reason why we have those fund balances. Largely, it is because you'll see the advances from the general fund in the TIPS. I told you before, it was $9.8 million. For 2022, that number's dropped to 8.2. And that's largely that tip number one. We knew that there's going to be money coming back into the general fund. So that's a big chunk of it. The second is, is our place and higher pension funds. When we calculate the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for 2022 with the pension obligation bonds, our place and higher pension expenses are only $4 million annually. So 25% of $4 million is only $1 million to set aside. Previously, it was $12 million. And so right there, that was $3 million. So that's a savings of $2 million just in that pension obligation bond set aside. So that's how this is accumulated rapidly. It's not blindside in this. We knew that this was, was going to be something to be looking at. And it's a, it's a, it's a good position for me. These are all updated. I have another attachment that shows all of the cash flows. It's two columns for all the enterprise. It's two columns for all the enterprise funds and all the internal service funds. I have a lot of notes, but I'm not going to go over. We're going to be talking about them again. I don't, I don't want to take your time up. But we're in very, very good financial positions going forward. And lastly, I wanted to say some very good news. It's the single sheet. Now, you're keeping my notes. Okay, these are my notes. And I do have to take a couple of minutes to walk you through this, because it's good news, I'm sorry. I don't mean to take your time. But this is the history of the unfunded liability across our police and fire, IMRF, and our open head retiree funds. There's history. And I want to bring your attention to the 123121 column halfway through. Police and fire, as you know, we issued the pension obligation bonds with the anticipation that we were going to be 85% funded. We had marked investments in October prior to selling the bonds. So again, it was conservative mark, my financial advisor helped us with that. But we had an outstanding investment quarter. For some stock market assault in this fund. But as of December 31st, instead of being a 15%, it's marked in red. For the unfunded portion of fire, instead of being 15% unfunded, we're only at 8.83. Or we are 91.17% funded. Opposite number. For police, again, instead of showing 15% unfunded, we're only 9.76. And what that means is when our actuarial does our update on an annual basis, potentially, again, they have to take the marketing into consideration for those factors. We are regulated, it's mandatory that we have to be 100% funded right now by 2040. So we have many years to make up only the 9%. So there is a chance, if our interest rates would stay the same, that our funding, annual funding letter, our normal cost would be the same, that the unfunded liability could be reduced. Which is very common again. It was in the second year, because I know it was a risk to do these PO rebounds and it's been hard.
So if fires, 190,000, so most of it, please, if there are?
For police, it is 90.24. Very good news. The next thing is, is our IMRF, we're overfunded. 10% is overfunded. Overfunded and as a result. I'm very pleased, and this is statewide, it's not just the city. They are, Leah told me, they are reducing the citywide city contribution rate from 5.15% currently to 2.03% next year. More than the 3% reduction. So when we run our salary lines, full-time salary lines excluding police and fire, 8450,000 dollars is moving up on the monthly. In addition to our fund balances, you know, we've got, anyway. It's, if everything holds, I'm just, I'm pleased to report good news. Leah also told us, this is just interesting information, that 2021 was the first year that IMRF has more tier-two employees than tier-one. Which means they're turning the turn, it's a different level benefit. And that's part of what's making up, you know, the, yeah. Reducing that unfunded liability. And they do a five-year smoothing. The bottom line is, we're in excellent financial shape. I appreciate your time. We will be coming back to you in July after we have gone out with the purpose, with the amendments. We'll come back to you with an update on our fund balances. Because as you recall during budget, you had asked if we'd come back and talk about our fund balances, what is the best use of those balances? But I think it's wise to get the amendments up to date, get the amended budget. So we will be coming back in July, maybe early August. And we'll have a good discussion prior to completing the budget for a recommendation for you to consider. And then we'll be updating the tips at that time. And it'll be good because it's following the strategic planning, will be all that incorporated into the budget as well.
So is it, it's good news, but we're not out of the woods because of costs?
Oh, no.
Correct.
But I guess what I'm trying to say, the message is, as we go in and amend the budget based with potentially 8, 8 and a half percent inflation currently, which could maybe even get worse, and nobody has a crystal ball. We are very well situated to be able to ride that storm out.
Okay.
It allows us some options for council to consider. But I appreciate your time. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, so feel free to call me.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Your Honor. Okay, we'll move to public comments. Anybody here now? No? So I will then close up, review the whole, and move to the regular council meeting. Let the delegates.
Let the leaders supervise the United States of America. A good republic, a righteous nation, one nation under God. And with this law, the liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation open, Ms. Masias? Your roll call, please. Alden Williams.
President.
Masias.
President.
Lent. Timian.
President.
Lawyer.
President.
O'Brien. Walden.
President.
Smith. Your Honor, I request approval of committee of the bulk council in section session minutes of May 10th, 2022. And appointments made during the vote on May 24th, 2022. Second meeting, or nexus. Council 3007-2022, Nordman's authorizing mayor city clerk to execute an test to Nordman's in Chapter 34, water and sewers. Under line code of ordinances, Section 34-4100, purpose and intent. Section 34-4201, green insurance permits. And Section 34-4203, detention system criteria by repealing said sections in their entirety enacted in lieu thereof, new Sections 34-4100, 4201, and 4203 dealing with the same subject matter. Council 308-2022, in ordinance, Chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic open line code of ordinances and extent thereof, parking prohibited at any time by including 36th Avenue on the north side for a distance of 40 feet from the stop sign at 41st Street. Council 309-2022, in ordinance, Chapter 20, motor vehicles and traffic open line code of ordinances and explore thereof, reroute stop intersections by adding intersection of 35th Avenue and 14th Street. Resolutions. Council 1100-2022, resolution authorizing mayor city clerk to apply for state highway permit with Illinois Department of Transportation and to execute necessary forms in conjunction with Quad Cities Marathon and Road Race. Sponsored by Quad Cities Running Club, scheduled for Sunday, September 25th, 2022. Council 1101-2022, a resolution authorizing municipal services general manager to sign a quote from New Sign Supply Texas Houston, Texas for the purchase of an HP 365 64 print and cut and an update to the Traffic CAG software program. Council 1102-2022, a resolution authorizing the interim city engineer to accept a proposal for professional engineering services with Kirk Graham Engineering and Environmental Incorporated for a quiet zone due diligence report for the establishment of a quiet zone from 45th Street, Rock Island, east to 55th Street, Moline, on a time immaterial basis estimated to be 20,625 dollars. Do you have a motion to?
Motion to approve, second, Jennifer.
Motion, Alderman, Timian, second, and then Alderman, Masias. Roll call, please. Alderman, Masias.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Lawyer.
Aye.
Walden.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Council 310-2022, in ordinance, Chapter 35, zoning line development. Under line code of ordinances by acting amendments to zoning map. Incorporated therein as Section 35-3103, 5020, 47th amendment. Council 311-2022, in ordinance, Amendment, Chapter 1, general provisions of the line code of ordinances by repealing Chapter 1 and then requiring, acting in lieu thereof, one new Chapter 1 dealing with the same subject matter. And that is all I have, Your Honor. Thank you. But on to Ms. Masias' business. I've got a couple of different things, and please, so we can chime in if you'd like. Of course, we all know about the troubling accident that happened on our pedestrian and bike path this weekend. I'm very proud of Chief Paul, Minister of Vitas, and all of our partners in Baton North as well for getting onto the issue quickly yesterday, having a solid meeting. And I noticed today Mayor Gallagher already sent me pictures of their temporary obstruction, obstructive devices or barricades, they're their big flower pots. So they've taken that step on that side. And I didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to say, but I know that they're continuing to look for more permanent solutions for increased safety on that path.
I think what I'd like to do is, yeah, we did have a great meeting, it was about 20 people on the call. Both DOTs, Illinois and Iowa, consulting engineers on the project, city representative of Moline, as well as Batonburg, Chief Snyder was also on there.
So the excitement.
Aside from the tragedy that happened, I want to thank the fire department and the police department for their response to the incident, understanding of the brutal, and my heart was up, the guy who worked on that. So that said, we are, we are working with folks in Baton North, DOTs, to address signage that would identify this as a bike path. David Markings, you know, the trailhead is eastbound, westbound, which are not very visible. Talked about that. David Markings actually on a trail with a 18 movement, bi-directional movement. And then we're looking at, and again, our site is, our trailhead is a lot different than the trailhead that's engineered on the other side because of the turning movements coming off of, as I knew this, Grand Street. And I'm mistaken, or you're mistaken. But they are looking at realignment of the trail. So we, at this stage of the game, we're looking at all the alternatives and how to best address what happened and how we can try and reflect it as much as possible in the future. So that's what I'm excited about.
Thank you. And so last week was a busy week with community events. One being the river cutting up there on the path. And that was a good event. Followed by, for me, the TDK, Quad Cities Marathon kickoff on Thursday. A lot of regional cooperation there, it was mentioned. And then followed by a Time Forces Day celebrations, that were elected officials from all the cities there at the arsenal celebrating 160 years. So it was very good to see the support for the arsenal and see the activity that they generated despite a rainy, rainy, rainy cold day. And that's especially lovely to see the work of Brown Allison, who's leading for terminate, um, this, and we're here around for the arsenal.
Sure.
And she was.
We're in a good position.
Yes, exactly. Also, I just wanted to let you know that I have received some positive feedback on the work being done in the memorial park. People have noticed that, and they really appreciate the work that we're doing to fix things there. So I wanted to make sure that got passed on. And lastly, as I've mentioned several times, Alderman, Lawyer, and I continue to work toward a listening post. So I think we've identified a date now, May 31st, 6:00 p.m. And we will obviously be listening to whatever the community wants to share with us, feedback on what's working or what might not be. But we'll also be prepared with Craig Mack, who was here earlier, and Sean Foley, related to the topic of tiny homes. That was part of what we asked the planning commission to think about. But we thought among staff and myself, that having some community feedback and just talking through it a little bit, several times, this being one of them, would be okay to get some information to the planning commission for they, on that particular topic. So that's all I have. Okay, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor. So this Friday is the start, the official start of our Capitol fifth in the second ward. And it's, mark your calendars for the rest of the summer. It's, it's great to see that all these summer events are taking off for him. Just, just great to be out there and just be around people on big events. So if you get a chance, please check it out. That's it, Your Honor.
Anything? Nothing, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor. Last administration, last public work, were during the start of COVID, where they were short employees, made a change to the policy down there, where we do right-of-way mowing. And they eliminated a number of the areas they do right-of-way mowing on because these were private properties. As we know, private property is responsible for taking care of their right-of-way mowing. Historically, we mowed these areas ourselves because it was difficult for people to take care of. During COVID, when we were short employees, we made that switch. And we basically now put the illness onto Brad Holman, this lawn mowing contractor, to get these done. And I don't know about you guys, but if you take a look at your right-of-way, some of your wards, it's horrendous. It's three to four feet deep in certain areas. Partly because we've taken it away from that right-of-way mowing, put it onto Brad, who then has to do this deal and get it mowed. And I am not disagreeing with that this is responsible, responsibility to private owners. But what I would like the public work staff legally to consider is, we have the ability to go back to mowing these ourselves, which is done much quickly, much more quickly than what Brad's contractor can do. And then we keep track of our charges and bill those properties. It would seem to me to get these things mowed a lot quicker than they are now. And I would like to hear back from staff when they get a chance to evaluate that, to see what their recommendation would be. Because I've got areas in the seventh ward that honestly are right now 30 to 40.
To add to that, Brad has talked to me about how getting reliable contractors is difficult. And some of this would probably ease a lot of issues.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up.
That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Masias.
We will bring a response back to that issue. And I will take a look at how bad it is for its stuff. It's usually so well manicured that I couldn't manage. So I'll be happy to take a look.
All right, you do have something to say? Hey, go for it.
I have lots of things, but I'm actually trying to manage all of them. I really, the only thing I really want to do right now, I want to welcome Michael Roy under the public works department, on your director. This is an issue that I'm talking about right away, seeing Terry jump first night. Anybody have good news? And I wanted to take the time to thank our interim director of engineering, and that's Michael Shane, for I think the outstanding job that he's done since joining, was it December? It was the summer he showed up. I was going to see him the first day with a brand-new coat, brand-new boots, shiny. Hat, he was dressed in gloves, right? And I walked in, I felt like, okay. I said, yes, it'll be a long winter for you, right? But no, he's, he's done a great job of working with the engineering department, working across departments all along. And, you know, kudos to you and good luck to you back down there in Florida with hurricane season started.
Thank you.
You ever, you ever need a new bomb, you always move up here.
Okay.
Keep you warm. That's all.
Thank you. We, we're good. Oh, no more public comment? Yes?
Do you want to hear anything about that rezoning phase, which is on, I don't know, 50? There was a question about it.
I think you're, no, we've already passed that to the second reading, so the- So there'll be a report, I know, that needs to go to the council with the updated information.
You were bringing the door to lock?
Yes.
That's right. Yeah, that did pass the process. So we will be bringing that forward for the second reading.
So the updated...
Your report will be necessary.
Yeah, that report will be necessary. You don't have to do it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. No more public comment. Executive session.
Your Honor, I make the motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five I L C S twenty twenty slash two C to learn.
Second?
Stand.
Okay, by Alderman lawyer. Uh, roll call, please. Alderman Ms. Sius?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Lawyer?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Okay, we're going into closed session.